This is my clock. So, people that are taking, I'm watching my phone. I'm watching the timer. I'm not disengaging.
Yeah, there was one time during a meeting you were looking at the thing and...
Looking at the app.
Yes, I heard.
Okay, we have five o'clock. I call the meeting to order. We have all board members here, so we have a quorum. If we could start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, before we start, I just kinda wanna update the board and the finance committee, people here tonight. With the packet that you have in here, I updated the budget packet, the whole packet to reflect the changes we made yesterday. And so, you know, the departments that we adjusted, and the revenue that we adjusted out of the ambulance department, were reflective in here, and also reflective on your expense budget summary. So, I wanted to have the people to see what those changes, what they look like for bottom line. That's part of the change. I want to note too that pollution control budget, which is the very last one, we had, there was an expense that wasn't tracking, which is out of the debt service, and so that number is now in here. And that's for the debt service for the new, for the upgrades. And so, you'll notice that increased the budget there for the overall budget for the pollution control. That's updated in this worksheet as well. Currently, with the changes that were made yesterday, factoring in revenues and expenses, the net of that is resulting, is basically looking like a 1.31 mil decrease. That's the town absorbing the intergovernmental increases that we have no control over. When you back out the, what we're absorbing, the net of the town's expense and revenue budget is about one and a half mil decrease on our own budget. Already. So...
Gary, do you, off the top of your head, do you know the figures that you're talking about when you're saying you're backing out those, some of those figures like?
We talked about that.
Like the, like the county?
Yeah, so, we are absorbing $69,000 of increases in the inter-local budget that we covered last night. That's the county.
Right.
Increase, value recycling in the airport. Those three combined is just shy of $70,000.
Okay.
Okay?
So, adding those figures back into that figure that you have there, that puts over, over 500,000?
That if you're...
You're at 458, 383 at this moment, then?
That, that's inclusive of...
Of those figures?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
But I'm just trying to give you a mill rate picture that the town is doing.
As a whole.
What's ours and not somebody else's.
Got it.
The other thing I wanted to do, I think, would provide a little bit of context, and this is not, this is last year's pie chart, if you will. We included, something we did differently, we included this in the town report ahead of the budget sheets. Okay, and so what this does, illustrates a picture for what? Where your dollars are going for department, including the county, the school, and all that stuff. Okay? It's kind of paints a little bit of a picture.
Gary, did you find out about the 17.5? I'm, I'm just gonna write it down again.
I just wanna go over, remember this is last year's? This is the... So, the illustration here is, basically shows for every thousands of dollars, $1,000 that you spend on a property tax bill, where your money's going, alright? And so, if you had, if you're, you pay $2,000 of taxes, whatever the, whatever's broken down here, you would multiply that by two. If you're paying 1,500, it'd be 1.5. So, this was meant to try to show, put a big picture on, in something visible. You know, without having to leaf through budgets and try to visualize what that means. I think this pie chart paints that picture. If you would, just for example, last year's budget, for instance, for every thousand dollars that was spent on taxes, can your tax bill, a thousand bucks of that? If it was a thousand bucks, you would've spent $98.30 towards public works. 85 cents for social services, $47 for the county tax, $414 for education, $31.76 for capital and reserves, $36.12 for debt service, $19.52 for the, the Office of Community Development Codes and Assessing. General Government, that's the administration, which is $60.94. $14.45 for insurances, $77.90 for intergovernmental, $9.42 for the library. Overlay and TIF, TIF district is our taxing curve and financing districts. Those, those are not something that's within the control. These are things that were established by the town, that we show up as an expense. And the overlay is part of the tax commitment process, and that, that shows up as an expense as well. Parks and Recreation, $38.68. Public Safety, which includes police, fire, and EMS, $120.8. And then, within that circle, that, that chart shows the breakdown of percentage, county, education, and municipal. Alright, so, I think this puts into context where your dollars are going. And, you know, I kinda look at this like, if I'm spending $2,000 of taxes, $200 of that's going to roads, road repairs, road maintenance, road plowing, all of that stuff. Okay? $128, $120, if I had $2,000 tax bill, then I would have $240 that would tell me that I have fire, EMS, and the police protection. So, it kinda puts things into context, I think. And that was the goal of when Dana and I, Dana was working, and we worked on this together. I said, "I'd like to see if we can find a way to paint a picture of what the budget looks like." So that you can just look at it and be, "Okay, wow, that, that makes sense to me." Without having to really delve, you know, for those people that grab the town report and just kinda look at it quickly. So, this is gonna be updated once we're done, and this is going to be included in the, right, as an insert, as part of the budget that's gonna go into the annual town report. Okay?
So, without putting a calculator to that figure, Gary, we have already, we have already been to the good now. We have already got a savings of roughly one and a third mil? If I'm just looking at this roughly?
One point, yeah, 1.31 mil, one and one-third mil.
So, for the record, I mean, we've already got that much in savings at this point, without really doing any more than what's been presented to us.
And Mr. Board Chairman, if I may, one more comment before we dive in. The town has, we talk about the undesignated fund. And the undesignated fund is considered the town's rainy day fund, any town's rainy day fund. This town has a designated, undesignated fund balance policy adopted by the board, that we should have 90 days of cash. So, 30 days of cash for the town to operate is $900,000. $900,000, that's including when we have to pay the county and the school, all that stuff. So, that would make our fund balance policy target of $2.7 million. We were pretty much wiped out by the, by the mil abatement. And so, I mentioned that because it's very important for you to understand that the only way to fund the undesignated fund is that the departments either don't spend all of the money that day, we're budgeted, or we received more revenue than we projected. Okay? And then there's the overlay, and the overlay is part of the tax commitment process that gives, the tax commitment a cushion for errors or unforeseen mistakes. And when you have a six, you know, when you have a budget includes, you know, the town's budget of 6.1, 6.2 million, and the school's budget, and that, you wanna make sure that you have a little bit of overlay that's allowable by the state, and the overlay can be 5% of the municipal budget. So, whatever the municipal budget is, there's a range that the board, selectmen has discretion over to commit taxes. And the overlay could be anything from zero, which is very unadvisable, to 5% of the town's municipal budget, not school and all that. Now, the more we shave from our budgets, the less of an opportunity that we're gonna have at the end of the next, this business year that we're in, June 30, 2020, to roll money back into the undesignated fund that needs to be built back up. Okay, there's only three ways. We don't use our overlay, we don't spend the money that's budgeted to us, and we drag, we bring in more money than we budgeted for. So, the more we, the more we clamp down on spending, the harder it is for us it's gonna be to build back that rainy day fund. That's all I have before we dive in. Thank you.
Very good. All right, let's go on to Article 2, to consider Department 310, Police Department Budget. Department 310. Yep?
Are we just going through line by line? Item, item?
That's how we've operated yesterday, and I'm assuming we're gonna do the same today?
Okay. Salary and wages, I have a little over a $10,000 decrease in the proposed budget from over last year's approved budget. We did, we have one officer position that we did not replace. So, we saw there was a little savings from that, but I did have to add in some overtime to help cover the shifts that that officer would've been doing. So, but there was a decrease. Employee benefits?
Would you read the amount? I don't know if you said the amount for that?
Oh.
It would be good for the camera?
$389,832.
Good.
Ross, does this reflect, you have a secretary going, retiring in December, is that?
Correct.
And then you're hiring a part-time?
We're still working on that. There's talk that we might be sharing one person with public works.
So, does this figure reflect if you would have to put a full-time in?
This, this figure would reflect her full salary for the year.
Coming back to the, the time and a half, the overtime, I take it for granted that that's paid a time and a half?
We, we work on a, what they call a 28-day cycle. So, the officers work on an average of 42 hours a week. So, at the end of the month, because of Fair Labor and Standard Act for Law Enforcement, they actually have to work over 171 hours during that time period to be eligible for the overtime. After that, so it's straight time for 171 and a half, is anything after that.
So, how much are we actually paying? Are there many hours? What I'm getting at is just...
Last year, we had, I believe it was $37,000 in overtime.
Okay.
And the overtime covers officers that are on vacation, to replace their shifts, any sick, sick time, trainings that they need to attend, court hearings that they need to go to.
Well, are you, are you looking to replace the man that you've lost?
We are not.
You're not?
No, we're gonna try to make do with what we have.
Is it costing us more than hiring another man?
It's costing us $10,000 less in wages.
Plus benefits.
Plus, plus the...
And benefits, and workers' comp insurance, and all these.
Do I discuss employee benefits? I don't...
Yeah, just go, just go down through. Just basically read off the numbers compared to last year.
Retirement, it's at $39,373. It's an increase from $35,431 from last year. Health insurance, this year's...
And I'll stop you there, 'cause I'm just remembering, the, under the new plan for, for new officers, is that number's built into that, remember?
Right, so, Jamie Pelletier did make a presentation to the board a little while back about wanting to negotiate change in the retirement system, which had to be brought to the town meeting. So, I believe it was approximately a $5,000 or $6,000 increase that the town would have to pick up for their share of retirement for the officers, and that would be included in that number if it's approved at the town meeting.
So, I think it would be important to explain that, and that was right before, that was back in, oh, I can't remember, but it was, it was the previous board. Dan, you were there in public participation, I think. Under the plan, I think the new retirement plan allows the off, new officers, this is not a retroactive for old officers. This is a plan for new officers, and this has to do with officers being able to retire, you know, if they start young and retire at 25 years, and not at 67 years old. Correct me if I'm wrong here.
60, 65.
65. And so, this plan that they have in place is somewhat of a plan to be more of a recruitment tool for new officers. Can you imagine trying to spend 25 years in law enforcement? Or, or working, worse than that, if you worked, if you started young and you ended up working 40 years in law enforcement, that's, that's a long time. And so, this, under the main state retirement system, they had this option, so what the Police Association did at their own expense, they didn't, they had Main Purse do an actuarial study to see what that cost would look like. And it, they calculated it out to be about $6,000 increase in the town's response, the employer's contribution to the system. Ross is correct that it does need to go, eventually get approved at the annual town meeting. And so, I think the board at the time was interested in saying, "Yeah, you know, we'll, we'll see this through." Typically, and, you know, this would be for Jan, July 1, okay? But because of COVID and everything stopped, and we, they needed a commitment from us that we were gonna move forward, and we explained to them that, you know, we can't even have a town meeting, we're barely having board meetings, so I'm not gonna have a commitment for you for June, so that's, this could be in effect for July 1. And so, they anticipated that, this was, this was a request that was being, or concern that was being made by other municipalities with police departments. And the Main Purse Board basically said that they would, they would honor a retroactive approval, meaning if the townspeople approve this new retirement plan, in whenever we have our town meeting, that it would be able to take effect July 1 of this year. So, the, that increase that there in main state retirement is reflective of the town's increased contribution to main state retirement for the police officers.
So, we were looking at it to try to make, to stay competitive with the other police departments in the area. Fort Kent PD just went to that plan, Van Buren PD went to that plan, the Sheriff's Department went to that plan. So, we're trying to stay somewhat similar to the benefits that they're offering, so we can retain the officers. Next, Social Security. Proposed was $24,170. Last year was $24,775, so there's a slight decrease. Medicare, this year's $5,653. Last year was $5,794. And there's a police physical fitness benefit, it's $2,100. And what that is, the officers, once a year, take a physical fitness test using the Police Academy standards. And if they pass the test, that they're given a $250 stipend for maintaining their physical fitness during the year. Police liability insurance, $6,200, same as last year's. Animal control, $500. Last year was $500. That goes towards, if we have to euthanize any animals, send any animals to the vets, any trainings that our animal control officer needs to attend, that's funds come out of that. Clothing, safety equipment, $4,000, same as last year's. Contracted services, $13,500. Last year was $13,000. That's the dispatch service with the Ursa County Sheriff's Department. Due subscriptions, memberships, $350, same as last year's. Evidence, $500, same as last year's. But that is, if we have a blood kit for, say, a person operating under the influence, we have to send that down to the state lab to be tested, so it pays for the postage. If we would have someone that was operating under the influence of drugs, we have to pay to have their drug tests done. Any supplies that we need for evidence collecting comes out of that budget. Printing and advertising, if we advertise for a law enforcement position, or when we have the no parking winter signs made, to have posted at the end for the wintertime. Prisoner meals and transport, I have it at $600 for this year. Last year was $500. They kinda mislabeled that. I don't know why we call it prisoner meals. What this is, it's actually lo, it's prisoner lodging. If we transport a prisoner to Caribou for Holton, they charge us $75 to use their facility. And then, the following day, a sheriff's deputy will transport them the rest of the way to Holton. So, what we look at is, is it cheaper to pay the $75 or have somebody come in four hours overtime to go to Holton to bring a prisoner? So, we use up those funds first and then send them, everyone to Holton after that. Travel and training, $7,500. Last year was $8,000. We do have a, an officer that's gonna be attending the Police Academy if they ever decide to start back up. Officer transfer, zero. Last year was zero. That was when Garrett Albert came on board, we had to pay off Brunswick PD for their investment in him for attending the Police Academy, but that's all been, been taken care of now. Office supplies, $1,300, same as last year's. General supplies, $150, same as last year's. Telephone, $3,500. Last year was $2,500. There's an increase of $1,000 because the, I believe the town office had been picking up a portion of the VoIP phone system, so that's gonna now be allocated to each department, so we figured it's gonna be about $1,000 more per department. $400 for the internet, same as last year. Electronic equipment, $500. Last year was $500. Every year, we have to have our radar units calibrated, make sure that they're accurate, and that costs us right around $500 for it. Repairs, when we have to send out the radars for repairs. Gas, $11,500, same as last year's. Vehicle maintenance, we got a little increase. One of our vehicles is getting a little older, so we're getting, having to put a little more money into that one now. So, that's at $4,500. It's an increase of $1,000 from last year's. So, this year's budget's $624,303, which is approximately a $4,000 increase over last year's budget.
Is your bottom figure?
I think your bottom figure's a little different.
Yeah, okay, I was just gonna say that. Did I misunderstand something?
625,977?
624.
Wonder what's different?
30...
55, roughly.
I think it's...
54.
You have a picture copy now?
Yeah, 64. 3, 389, 32? No, 179.
I find these telephone bills just...
No, you know what it is, it's, it's because we built in, we built in a main state retirement increase, and Ross hadn't done it on his end. But Carol and I worked on that, we added it in. That's the difference.
I got a question.
Yep.
It's always been that when it comes to the police department, there seems to be a resistance to ask questions. People are afraid of going to jail or what it is, but... I understand this is a tough question, but... I understand this is a tough question, but assuming, assuming the very worst, that if the Board of Selectmen all of a sudden would decide that every department, if they come out with a round figure and say, look, every department has got to cut by a certain percentage. If you were ever faced with that, what would be the first area that you would be looking at? What would be the?
I guess it would depend on the amount. I mean, the easiest way would be maybe cutting back on the coverage hours. I don't know if I would want to do that.
Because it's common knowledge that the police department comes under fierce attack by the general public. I don't know if it ever trickles down to you people, but you know, people ask, well, why do we have so many cars? And why do we have so many officers? And why, the people are just loaded with questions. Which I don't have the answer to. But regardless of the number that you'd be asked to cut by percentage, there's got to be an area that you think that if you had to start whittling, where would you start?
We've kind of been whittling for the last several years, though, so we're kind of, now we're looking at personnel for.
Okay.
And I did bring, just quickly, I, with COVID-nineteen, our calls were down so far this year, I think everyone's business kind of slowed down, but up to this point so far, like this year, we had thirty-eight domestic violence calls, seven child abuse cases, thirty-four thefts, eighteen vandalism complaints, sixty-seven car accidents, three hundred and ninety-six traffic violations. And then, and that's just some of the, and then all the other calls that also come in, but. So the officers are busy.
But you're saying that that's, that's down from your task?
This is, this is actually down from last year's. Last year, just in August, I believe we had, I think it was seventy-seven criminal complaints, criminal cases, just in August of last year. So, but like you say, you take one of these child abuse cases. I have Lieutenant Jamie Pelletier, he's our investigator. He will spend two to three weeks of time working on one case, so it ties him up for, you know, considerable amount of time.
Anybody else? Very good, we're all set with this article for now.
That was easy.
For the record, Ross, I'm not scared of you, I just already asked all my questions. It's our second go around, so. I wasn't too scared to call you old, so.
All right, then we're ready to move on to Article Three.
Thank you, Ross.
Yep, thank you, Ross. Consider the Department Two Hundred, Community and Code Enforcement Department budget.
Can Ross do mine, since he did such a good job on his? No?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Can Ross do mine?
Oh, sure, if he's willing.
Yeah, right, I think that's what it is, it's a different uniform. You guys just want to do the same thing, just go through it?
Yep.
Okay, salaries and wages. Proposed one oh five, five sixty-five, which is up slightly from last year, last year was one oh three, five fifty-seven. Reasoning behind that, Gary, it's a different term, I believe, is our code enforcement officer received a pay increase earlier this year, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's the the difference in that number. Employee benefits, main state retirement, I want to make sure I'm using the right one, I have ten, one thirty-seven?
Yep.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. It went up slightly from last year, which is ninety-eight thirty-six. Health insurance also went up, thirty-seven thousand for twenty-twenty-one compared to thirty-three seven seventy-seven. Social employer, Social Security, went up slightly, sixty-five forty-five compared to sixty-four twenty-one last year. And employer Medicare, again, went up very slightly, fifteen thirty-one compared to fifteen oh two last year. Stop there and ask for questions, or just keep rolling?
This is pretty generic at this point, this employee benefits, so yeah, keep going, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Operating expenses, I proposed a five-hundred-dollar reduction, fifteen hundred dollars this year compared to two thousand last year. Miscellaneous, I left that the same as last year at four hundred. Postage is the same at four hundred. Printing and advertising, I left that the same as well at eighteen hundred. Travel and training for the Community Development Director, myself, I brought that down. Big reason for that is just right now with COVID, there's just not a lot of trainings being held that involve traveling. Zoom has, is going to save us some money with that, so six thousand dollars this year compared to eighty-five hundred dollars last year. The travel and training for the code enforcement officer for St. Agatha and Eagle Lake, that remains the same, that travel continues regardless. Office supplies, again, remain the same at seven fifty, compared to last year, same thing. The digital sign, proposed a three-hundred-dollar reduction, a thousand dollars versus thirteen hundred. So with the digital sign, we have to, in order to transmit the signal to that sign, there's a cost for that each time. With the bridge project coming, the location of that sign is probably going to have to be moved. And we're going to try to look in to see if maybe we can get it in a location where they can feed off of our internet at the town office, possibly, and hopefully be able to reduce some cost there. And maybe even reduce that further, if we can feed off our Wi-Fi signal, I believe it wouldn't cost us anything, right?
No, if we could, if we could bounce a Wi-Fi to it.
Yeah, and I, I, we, I've had a few conversations on it, we haven't got, I've gotten there yet, but I've, I've proposed a three-hundred-dollar reduction, thousand versus thirteen hundred.
Now, with with that real quick, Keith, since there are plans to go wireless soon, and a thousand dollars is not a lot in the bigger picture, but it is, every little bit counts. There is the ability to update that sign directly at the sign. I would propose maybe getting rid of that thousand-dollar charge and going with that, you know, since it's not changed every day, it's changed once in a while.
Of course, yeah.
In foreseeing that, yes, it would cost nothing by doing it wireless. And that's actually something that I'd like the board to review with all the departments wireless internets and regular internets, is propose to do a town-wide wireless system that would cost a lot less every year for for internet, so.
As a whole.
As a whole. You'd have internet in one location and feed it from building to building, which would also increase the reliability of the phone system and make things a little easier for everyone, so.
We did, we did look at that a little bit through our, through our LED light project, there was some technology. With the new streetlights and the photocells, you can get all kinds of interesting technology to put on there, you can send Wi-Fi from streetlight to streetlight. And so we, we looked at the options where we could, knowing that we were going to own our streetlights, we had the ability to put Wi-Fi on those, just closed circuits or closed networks, just to push signals. But it, it wasn't going to work for us. And there are areas like Public Works and Pollution Control, we have issues over there with Wi-Fi. And I think it has to do with not, not coming across the track, or something over there. I, I, I wouldn't want to reduce it further than a thousand dollars this year, only because we're going to incur costs to have to move that sign. And we have to decide where the sign's going to go, we haven't figured that out yet. But we're definitely going to basically take the power source, the breaker panel with the sign and reinstall that somewheres, and so we're going to have to get a new power source if there's none, and the labor, I know Public Works can do most of it, but the electrical work will have to be done by, by an electrician, so kind of like to leave a little bit of money in there to, to move that sign. Otherwise, we don't have any funds to or ask some department to help fund the moving of that sign.
Yeah, no, that works for that. But the, you know, like, the, the, the schools are all working on that wireless networking site-to-site, the high school, elementary school, the superintendent's office, they're all going through that technology where one internet location and then they're spreading it across the buildings, so.
They're on, they're on that dark strand, or they're on that three-ring binder.
Right, but for their, for their phone systems and for what the internet that the, the buildings would require, that wireless setup would, would work, that the school's using would work fine, so. I, I think it's something we still should look into some more.
Yep.
Okay. Yep.
Abatements, left that the same as last year, five thousand for each. The, the next two were the sort of reduction, the big reduction in, in my budget, the agent fee for real estate assessing, last year, we contracted that out at seventeen two fifty. I have my assessor certification, so I've taken on that role, so that's, we're not going to pay that contract out. So that's at zero. And we also contracted the personal property agent, which was four thousand dollars last year. And that one as well is going to be zeroed out because I have certifications necessary to handle that role. The next one is business development activity. I proposed a fifteen-hundred-dollar reduction, four thousand dollars this year versus sixty-five hundred last year. In terms of I printed out, just to kind of see last year what I had, so a majority of, of the money that I spent there was, had a lot to do with our boost program and our microloan program, just a lot of the advertising and the promotion that went along with that. So a lot of what I did there came out of, came out of the business development fund. I was looking at the vast majority of what, of what that was. And then community development, I proposed a three hundred, a seven-hundred-dollar reduction, three thousand this year versus thirty-seven hundred last year. And I, I looked through that one as well, a lot of that is like, just some of the community events that go on, we had Rhythm and Roots last year. We had the, you know, small expense, we had the podcast that came up last winter, that Kirk Minahan podcast where he came up here and there was a big gendig at the, at the lake, I, they wanted the town in Madawaska to provide them the quote-unquote key to the city, so I had something made for them, so it gave us some promotion from a community development side. And then I also, I talked to Gary today, the farmer's market, we recently put stain on it. And I wasn't aware that it was a farmer's market budget item, so I was, I was taking it out of this one. So that's majority of what, of what came out of that. But both of those, I was able to reduce the proposed budget for this year. The next one is the Acadian Day, Combe de Forêt, now, we had, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the previous board, had they made a decision firmly not to?
I think that we, we, you guys were there too, with the finance committee, and there was a lot of discussion about not funding that any, any longer. So, you know, I, I left with the impression that there wasn't any desire to continue to fund that, so there's a zero there right now. That would be a big, that would be a four thousand thirty-five dollar reduction there.
And I'm comfortable with that as well.
I was aware that, I, listen, I, I'm not trying to put the four thousand back in, but we had the conversation during a budget meeting and it didn't go any further than that. So to say that we made a decision is not correct, like, he came in and presented to us just like the Historical Society, and just like the, you can make any decision you want, I'm, I'm just telling you guys, I'm not asking you to put it back in, but for the record, that was not a board decision.
And I, I apologize for my wording if it was.
No, it's okay, I, I just want to make sure that everybody, like, the other, the new board members here know that, you know, that was removed from the budget.
Right.
Just under a conversation, so.
And, and in my looking at this budget, I found that as a place where I'm comfortable not funding that and putting that four thousand dollars in our pocket. Engineering, I left that the same at three thousand, I, I don't believe we spent any money on that last year, that, that money is there. If we have smaller projects, or if we're looking for any sort of grant that involves some preliminary engineering for any project we might look into, that money is there to pull from. Again, there was nothing last year that we needed out of that, but I, I wanted to leave that the same. Lean cost and filing fee, that's the, the cost to.
Tax liens.
Tax liens.
Recording, recording of tax liens at the registry, not only the recording, but the discharge as well. So that's a nineteen-dollar transaction per, every time you file the registry, so for every lean that you file, that you anticipate you're going to, you're going to spend the same amount of money to discharge that lean, so we build that into the budget at that amount.
And then the last item I have is property mapping. We did not, our, our tax maps, our, our large tax map, tax maps at the, the town office are in desperate need of getting redone. We were not, we didn't do it last year, it's something that we're looking into. The gentleman who used to do this, we're not sure if he's going to be able to do it, so I'm trying to quote out or try to start, I've asked a few colleagues in the assessing world to give me some few, a few names that we can work with and see what that cost is, but I, I believe we'd like to get that done this year. It's a, it's a lot of red ink on the maps, we'd like to have them updated.
Yeah, Keith, if I could just expand on that for you a little bit. A lot of the towns are moving to digitized maps that are available online, and so there's initial, it's, it's, it's where things are going. The bulk of our traffic for tax maps are realtors that come in, there's, and so, you know, we talked to one of Keith's counterparts in Priscile, Louis Cousins, he's assess over there, and we asked them what they did, and they moved away from paper maps and they're, they're fully digitized. There's an upfront investment to get it, you hire a company to come in there. And the upfront investment was somewhere near the city of.
Somewhere between thirteen and fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
To initially take everything that we have and digitize it. And then moving forward after that, you can do it every year you want, if you want, and I believe it was somewhere around a couple grand, two, three thousand dollars.
Annual updates.
To get that annual update, and then those are all digitized and could be available online.
But we spoke with Louis this week, I think it was.
Yep.
We basically said it eliminated all that traffic, all the realtors were people that look at transfers and, and changes, they get that right online now. And so for them, it's, it reduced their traffic in the building, and I think in the long run, there's a cost savings to, to being digital as opposed to paying four thousand dollars a year for paper maps.
Which are, you know, slowly transitioning out, like what Louis was telling us that, I mean, the paper, the old-fashioned way, obviously, everything's going more digital, so. Again, that's something to think about, I've gotten, I've only gotten one quote on the digital, I think it was about fifteen thousand, so I, you know, I, I don't have a bunch of numbers in front of me, I have to do a little more research on it.
And then one last thing, we talked about that, I asked the question, is what happens when somebody comes in and they want to see? And he said, we just bring it to our computer and we show them, and he said, the technology is pretty neat, because you can take the tax map and overlay it on a, on a Google Earth map. So you can actually see the lines on, on, on topography, if you will, on, on Google Earth. So that's very helpful. Right now, you just see, see the maps, and that's all you see. You really don't, can't correlate that to laying it on a piece of, on a, on a USGS map, if you will. So it's, I'm not saying we need to go there now. But eventually, that's the direction we're going to have to go.
So, so to finish it off, the, the bottom line proposed is two oh eight, six twenty-eight, which is a decrease from last year, which was two thirty-four, seven twenty-seven.
I've got a few questions. Back to travel time, uh, travel and training. We're the CEO of St. Agathon Eagle Lake. We've got a thousand dollars there on each.
Yep.
One. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Well, right now, our, our code enforcement agent goes to St. Agatha once a week on Wednesdays, so his mileage to and from there, as well as if he's going around the St. Agatha area on-site visits, those mileage, that mileage gets recorded and comes out of, out of that budget line item. And then as well as the CEO has to go out and maintain certification, he has to do, you know, credit hours, so some of those, again, with COVID, maybe more of those are going to become Zoom conferences, but in the past, he's had to go travel to wherever it is named to, to keep up his certification.
When, when the code enforcement officer is working for another community, should that not be the burden of the other community?
So.
Financial?
So, in our, in our internal agreement, we bill them for the services, so inclusive to our, our costs, our they're going to get the CEO for, for this annual cost per year. And so that's, we actually show a revenue for Keith's department, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I would have not thought about showing you that. If you want to go in and take a look on the revenue side, which is the very last page, under Development Code and Assessing, CEO contracted services for the, for both communities is roughly around that, nine thousand dollars is budgeted. Is roughly around that, nine thousand dollars is budgeted for three communities. Uh, Grand Isle as well, but Grand Isle is a very small amount of money. They have no shoreline really activity, and that's where the bulk of the permitting is, but we do have an agreement with them. But now we budget in about nine thousand dollars of revenue from those communities to help basically reduce his budget, the uh, cost of the CEO.
Closer to ten thousand in revenue.
Yeah.
Nine, nine, nine thousand eight sixty-nine.
So.
Go ahead.
This nine thousand dollar revenue is from three communities, am I understanding that right?
Yes.
And he goes to St. Agathon once a week?
Once a week.
And then what, what about the other?
During the summer months, um, so it's, it's what, May?
May through September, October.
Uh, and then Eagle Lake, he goes every other Friday. Same timeframe from May to October-ish.
Those are the hours, uh, but, but the CEO is available for people from those communities to call, when they can call here, when CEO is in this, his office here. He is available for, and likewise, when CEO is in the other community, if somebody had to get to him, he would have the ability of servicing uh, somebody from when he's away. So it's, seems, it's been working, working pretty well, yeah.
I'm just curious about the math, I'll have to, I, it just seems like it's a, a low number to be charging these communities for this service. Considering, you know, mileage and wages and insurance and, you know, all of the other stuff, and um, the time away from here.
We actually calculated out the per diem, what it costs for that position, benefits and everything included. And we bill, you know, we go with the number of hours that he's going to be in that community, uh, in, in that year. And that's basically what they're paying for, paying for his time, the cost of the employee, okay? If they end up having to use more hours, it's written into the agreement that, for instance, if there was a court case or something and it was a lot more hours required, then they would pay the per diem rate directly above and beyond uh, that. But what, we, you know, we've, we've modified, we've increased this amount uh, to reflect any changes that we, to the cost of the position, if you will, benefits and all.
My other question was, uh, where you mentioned about uh, the decrease of seventeen thousand dollars for the agent, agent fee. That you've taken on those responsibilities. Anywhere and everywhere that you look in the last ten years, and oftentimes, we've, I don't wanna pick on you guys, but oftentimes, we've compared to the paper mill, because the paper mill was pretty much setting the standard for everything in the community. But everywhere in the workplace in the last ten years, nobody will deny that every employee has been taxed with added duties. And as I look in the town office, I see the opposite. I realize that times change, but there was a time not that long ago, that in Madawaska, the town manager was responsible for general assistance. We did not have an agent to the tax assessor, and that's another thing that bothers me. When we vote for the town selectman in Madawaska, it is clearly written on the ballot. Town selectman, tax assessor, and overseers of the poor. So how the tax assessment has been given to the code enforcement officer is a violation of our paperwork when we vote. These are areas that need to be addressed, and if the lean times are upon us, as we look to move into the future. I believe that there will be a tremendous need in the town office to start combining jobs.
I'm, I'm gonna take exception to that comment right now, okay? The people in the town office literally work on a hamster wheel, and it spins crazy, okay? We work furiously with the workloads that we have. There is no town in the state of Maine where the Board of Assessors actually do the assessing. They hire assessing agents, or they have an assessing department, okay? They do the field work so that the Board of Assessors can commit the taxes, and when you commit the taxes as the Board of Assessors, you're gonna be given a, a, a snapshot of what the aggregate values of, of, of property are, be it personal property or real estate. And, and as the assessors, you're going to prove that. But there are no municipalities in the state of Maine, where back in the day, the Board of Assessors, the, the elected officials were the ones, yeah. That's old antiquated state law that doesn't work anymore, but it still exists, and towns have either assessing agents or in-house assessors.
Was this ever voted on in a town meeting?
I, I, I don't know, Dan, this has been, it's been like this for years.
We need to look into these matters. We talk about legalities and getting into legal disputes, and this is a perfect example of where we could get into some hot water legally.
We are assessors, Dan, a- as it's reported to us, and we, we accurately decide if we are taxing people in, 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 in a proper manner. It's not stated that we are actually going out and assessing. You're stating that we are doing that physical job, and that's not the case, and it, I don't think it ever has been.
It, it certainly has been.
If it was, it, it's certainly not in my time, I, I certainly don't remember hearing it in, in that way, no.
I remember seeing it, and I can name you the names of the men that went out.
I mean, we are all volunteers here, and we're volunteering a number of hours to, to do just what we're doing. If we're now gonna start running uh, and doing the assessing, that, that's a whole, that's a whole different game. I mean, I, 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 it's not the way I understood it, not, not, not now and not ever.
It's in black and white on the ballot, folks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We're good? Keith, I think we're all set for now.
Thank you guys for your time, have a wonderful evening. Again, a pleasure.
Article four um, is a typo, we've already covered the ambulance department um, last night. So we're gonna move on to article five. Consider Department one thirty, municipal building budget.
Good evening. As for the uh, Milson, Milsoninius, is a one thousand dollars, the same thing as last year. Supplies for janitor is uh, same thing, two thousand dollars, same thing as last year. Electricity, we went down due to the uh, changing of the LED lights. That went down, the uh, the kilowatts went down, so we brought down forty-five thousand, it used to be six thousand, brought up to forty-five. Telephone, well, that's the municipal, I mean, that's the town office, so that's really not my department. Why it went down?
Telephone went down because we started reassigning uh, costs to the other departments. Part of this is that three CX, uh, but the town's buildings has more than one department, so we have, you know, but we pick up a lot of the VoIP cost there. Because we have a lot of lines in the town office. As opposed to, you know, another department just having one or two.
As for trash, it's the same thing as last year, six hundred dollars. Sewer, three twenty this year, three hundred last year. Heating fuel went down seven thousand this, this year, compared to last year was eleven thousand three hundred seventy-five. Water fees, eight hundred, same thing as last year. Internet website, again, that's for the town, thirty-five hundred, same thing as last year. Software computer, that, that's the uh, town office, forty-nine thousand, was forty-four, six hundred last year.
Gerald, if I could just go back, the uh, the internet and website, it's a hundred fifteen, roughly a hundred fifteen dollars a month for time spectrum. And uh, that's a thirteen hundred and eighty dollars, and then four hundred and fifty for website and sixteen seventeen for website design, so we have monies in there for website maintenance.
As uh, vehicle equipment, zero both years, uh.
I, I can talk about minor equipment, Gerald, software and computer for you.
Oh, yes, sorry.
In that number, what we have is the uh, our managed services agreement with, for our computer and IT system. Included in that, and that cost is about thirty, thirty thousand, six hundred dollars a year. Uh, that includes managed services, uh, that includes um, being in the cloud, the hosting of that, the, the firewalls, the redundancy. It includes the subscription to Office three sixty-five, we don't have to keep updating our operating system, it continues to up, update. So that includes Office three sixty-five, and all that subscription for every single email account uh, that we have uh, in the town. Uh, which are all archived, and, and so we had nothing before. And now we have, you know, a, a system that's protected and legitimate, uh, and from ransomware and, and all that, so. That's part of that, and then the other, there's about sixteen thousand dollars, I'm rounding here, in there for our municipal accounting and property tax system. That does everything, it's called Trio, that does everything from our real estate, our tax commitment, motor vehicle registrations, vital records, birth certificates, you name it. Everything municipal, it goes through Trio. There are only two companies in the state, I think, that have um, municipal systems like this, there's this and there's uh, that's 'cause I, that's 'cause I was gonna say, I, Munis or something like that. The, this, this company here uh, works in the background. Updates for motor vehicle registration rates and all that stuff, you, all the new stuff that needs to be plugged in about cars, the information values, blue book stuff. That all, that automatically gets plugged in, um, and that comes to us through those services.
You know, before you, before you go on, I, I, it would be nice just to see what falls underneath this figure. I mean, I don't need, I don't think we need to see what these figures are, or we can question it at the time, but there's a lot that this, this, this uh, item covers, and, and yet for us, it's very hard to see what, what really transpires in that particular uh, line item. Go ahead.
Uh, building repairs, this year's down to two thousand five hundred compared to four thousand five hundred last year. It was uh, it was brought up last year due to thinking of uh, repeating inside the town office and re, re-giving it a touch to it, but when the uh, things got hard, well, you were saying, well, take, take off back to two thousand and just use whatever was usually was there before, the twenty-five hundred. So I left it there again this year for the twenty-five hundred. And for the special project, LED lights, uh, we transferred that thousand dollars two years ago to the safety complex instead, because we changed pretty much what we had to do at the town office. So the bottom number was, is now is seventy-six thousand nine hundred seventy compared to eighty thousand nine hundred seventy-five last year.
Anybody else, any questions? You guys, nothing? We're good? Okay, we're all set? Article six, to consider Department one thirty-five safety complex budget. One thirty-five.
The uh, general, general supply is seven hundred, stayed as last year, seven hundred. Janitor supplies, again, twenty-five hundred, stayed again the same thing as last year, twenty-five. The uh, electricity, uh, ten thousand, stayed the same as last year, ten thousand. Trash, same thing, seven hundred, seven hundred last year. Sewer went up a bit, one thousand six hundred sixty-nine, from last year was one thousand five hundred and sixty. Heating fuel went down twelve thousand compared to nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty last year. Uh, water fees, same thing, two thousand one hundred, same thing as last year. Safety, the uh, safety building repair maintenance, uh, it went up, that went up uh, four thousand and five hundred dollars compared to four thousand last year. It's like anything else, all the repairs are going up, so I added on five hundred dollars then, because last year I over, I overdrawn a bit last year, so. Communication tower, that, that was transferred to, to another department. The uh, special projects, LED lights are replacing the uh, lights in the building. Uh, like that, uh, two thousand again this year, just like last year. I do have, I do have proof that the uh, kilowatts are being lowered or using less kilowatts than doing that, same thing as the town office. So I've got proof that, that it does pay itself. Uh, small replacement window, the, the windows replacement, I put thirty-six, uh, three thousand six hundred like, like last year. The windows I got left to change is the windows, you might say, facing the staircases, on each end of town, facing Main Street. Those windows that have now, they got cracks or windows will open, and I don't think that would be necessary to have windows that open in there, so. Changing them to a regular window, it will change the framing, and if you change one end, it's gotta change the other end too, so. It's either yes or no, the change of both, I don't, if you wanna change one. So I think, uh, that's why I put three hundred and six hundred there, so that way I can buy both, both windows or both the staircases. Roof repairs, I get the.
Roof, roof repair, if you guys remember, uh, that was in his budget. And I, I think I noted that in my first send out of the budget, that we shifted that into a capital, the capital reserves budget, so once we get through this, we're gonna skip back to the back here, um, look at the capital reserve budget and talk about that project there.
The uh, police overhead, overhead door to be replaced, uh, we had an issue last winter that the the motor was uh, was not working properly, they were having problems, then they didn't call me up, so they instead of pulling the chain, they took the, the bars apart. And one of the bars, well, when they were opening up by hand, every time they opened up the door, it would puncture the door. As it went down, so you look at the door now, it looks like it's been shot by a torque gauge quite often, so. I did put caulking into it, but it's just like a Band-Aid, so now you might have water going into it. So that's uh, had a cost of like about fifteen hundred to replace the door. But it's still good for this year, could, I mean, if we could survive that, though, it's just that someday, it's just a Band-Aid, so someday it will have to be replaced. Because water will get into it, and I've got a new motor right now on it, and it does give a big torque on the motor to open the door, since it's uh, getting water off. So the bottom number is forty-one thousand two hundred sixty-nine compared to last year, last year was forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty.
Any questions?
Gerald's, uh, Gerald's the keeper of those buildings, but his wages are, are in the department budget.
Anyone else? Good, Gerald?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Are we talking about the roof?
Oh, Gerald, sorry, come back. Um, so what we did, um, in my, my email out, that I sent out last week, uh, when we sent out the budget, uh, it was a note there about what we did with that expense. Uh, we started talking about the roof replacement, Gerald reminded me, uh, when we talked about. Gerald reminded me, uh when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, that this roof replacement project is actually a three-phase uh project, meaning he's gonna tackle it in thirds, right Gerald? And so um the way that, and that's how he was gonna, he was gonna do it in thirds. We had this discussion in March, February and uh, you know, it seems stopped. And so right now, it's not likely that we would be able to go out to bid, get that work done this year. So what we're saying is that, you know, probably this would be a next year, summer project, at least the first phase of that would be a next summer project in that, you know, the board could decide, you know, finance committee could weigh in on this. Uh do we first of all want to fund the project and number two, do we want to pay for it all this year, put it in the reserve account? Or do we, seeing that it's going to be hitting two fiscal years when we actually do the project, we could either fund it all this, some this, all this year, half this year, half next year or all next year. Those are options that we could, we could do uh if if it was the desire of the board to tackle that project after July one next year. So we put a place mark for twenty-nine uh twenty-five thousand dollars uh for that project, uh for discussion and here we are.
So so um so I I'm understanding correctly, we're not going to discuss this issue under, once we get into the capital reserve accounts. We're we're gonna discuss it now?
Well, you know, I think we've been kind of talking about when we, the department heads are here when they're here with their budget. And so once we hit the capital budget, I hate to bring him back, he they're here.
I understand.
Just to go over the uh the reserve, so we're kind of talking about their budget and if they have any activity in the reserve budget, capital purchases as well.
So you're you're estimating that the cost to to do the repairs would be roughly, what, three years at seven, at twenty-five thousand, seventy-five thousand? Is that, is that how I'm, what am I, what am I missing?
Yeah, the first, the whole thing will cost a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, okay?
So.
So I divided it into three.
Into three, okay, so roughly three, thirty-three thousand.
The first phase would be the the bigger part, you might say before where where the seams would be. So it would be like forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty roughly for the for the first year. And the second year would be like thirty-two thousand five hundred. And the third year would be a smaller piece left with like twenty-five thousand after that.
So so explain to me what your, why your figures, I mean, you're you're basically telling us that this building is gonna hold up for three years? Uh without having to do any repairs?
We gotta start here somewhere, this should have been started.
I I guess really the the financing, I understand, I know what you're getting at, but I I guess you're looking for all of the financing before before you start the repairs, so you're talking a three-year financing, right?
No, 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 in phase, I mean, to do it phase one or the year, the first year to be done would be one section.
I get it, okay, you're gonna do it by sections then?
Doing it by sections, yes, yes. Not collecting by sections, it's doing it by section, collecting and doing it.
I understand, yep.
What's that estimate for power?
Anyone else?
So are you, are you comfortable with leaving twenty-five and funding it fifty percent of that first phase this year? And and putting and you're gonna put the other, the other part of it next year?
So so the first, the first portion you were saying was roughly, what, fifty thousand, forty-nine something?
About fifty thousand, yes.
So we would do twenty-five this year and twenty-five next, roughly?
Next budget.
Does that seem uh seem acceptable?
Because I'm, because the roof is thirty years old, the last.
So explain to me a little bit about what that first phase means, what what is it that you're gonna do with that first phase?
I'll do the first section.
Or section, yeah.
The first section in the building.
So so you're dividing the building in.
The building to three, in three, in three sections.
Okay, so you're gonna do, you're gonna do the first, first third and then then the next, then the next.
Second, third, yeah, in three years, you might say, yes. So unless I can do it all in one year, but.
Why why the difference in the pricing, if you're dividing the cost or the building itself by three, but the cost is?
It 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 depends on the section where the uh where the drains are and where the roof will, there's a, like a hump where they can put their seam there. And plus, every seam that they'll make, well, of course, they do a seam, then they'll have to break up the seam for the second phase, so. There is an extra cost instead of doing the whole thing at flat rate.
We just gotta look at, like, if we do the the twenty-five this year, twenty-five next year, you're looking at the third year, you'll be have to fund the full thirty-two thousand in the budget, so. To be able to do that section and then the last year.
Yeah, that one's like a, a smaller, a smaller section, yes.
Yep.
What's the difference in cost Gerald, between doing it in phases and doing it as a whole?
Uh it was like a hundred thousand, I didn't really, he said it would be a little bit more if I would make it in in into phases, but I said, well, it'd look better.
So the quote you actually have there is. Is in phases, you don't have a quote for, to do the whole thing?
I've got a quote to do it into two phases, like in two years. The first year was, again, the first year was a forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty for the biggest piece and then adding on the two, phase two and phase three together was fifty-three thousand six hundred. Like the second year.
And the increase between doing it in three and two is is how much?
About four thousand.
About four thousand dollars.
Okay. Anybody else? There's no part, public participation in this meeting.
Yep.
Anybody else? We're good to go?
Thank you Gerald.
Article seven, to consider Department one forty elections budget.
All right, so I'll start with the first line, salaries and wages gonna go from six thousand last year to eight thousand eight hundred this year and the reason for the increase, I gave you all the sheet, I believe, um is because like our annual town meeting, our annual school budget meeting and our school municipal election, school BBR typically is held in June with COVID. That fell into the next budget cycle, therefore, we didn't use it last year, but we have to make up for it in this year's budget because it took place after July first. Um and there was a minimum wage increase, therefore, the clerks hopped up a dollar an hour, so we had to follow those minimum wage um changes. Uh moderator, we increased from two fifty to four hundred in the event that we have any extra meetings coming up. Doesn't mean that we'll necessarily use it, but like when we need a moderator for special town meetings or anything, we'll have that money there for that. Like I said, it's, may not use it, but. Awarded stayed the same, three seventy-five last year, three seventy-five this year. Employee benefits, that's just the basic, four eleven for employer's social security to five ninety-four this year. Employer Medicare, ninety-six dollars to one thirty-nine this year. And then operating expenses, uh we left meals at five hundred last year to five hundred this year. Uh postage, we increased it from two hundred last year to two fifty-five this year uh for the reason of the presidential election in November. Last time we had a presidential election, we used quite a bit more postage than we had anticipated mailing out absentee ballots, so I'm just trying to plan ahead for this year here. Printing and advertising, last year we had twenty-three thou- uh twenty-three hundred, this year we went down to two thousand um to make sure that we can cover all costs if there's anything that we need to do, any extra. General supplies, we went from five hundred last year to twenty-five hundred this year, but I'll let Gary elaborate a little more on that one.
Yeah, so I was waiting, um we have our heating oil contracts with Dead River, so I reached out to them and Dead River was the company that would provide heating services to the multipurpose for the Top of Main Trade Show, that they have units that they stay, put into the doorways on off the side buildings, off the side of the buildings. And so I reached out to Russ, uh he, we did touch base today. Uh he told me that would basically be the cost of the fuel at our price. Uh they don't really wanna get paid for the service, they just said, whatever you use for fuel at your, at your contracted cost will be good, so. They're anticipating, uh depending on what the weather is, uh probably being on the safe side, starting to heat the building uh for that Tuesday election, starting on Sunday, running that all day Sunday, all day Monday, all day Tuesday and shutting it down Tuesday night after the elections are done. And so three hundred gallons at uh, one seventy-four gallon uh is what we were projecting to to heat that building based on um what Dead River proposed to us. So we had put a, I didn't know what the number was gonna be, I put a two thousand dollar increase in there, so I did not know, so we can take that down. Did you write that that number down Amy?
Yeah, three hundred gallons at our contract price, it would have been around five twenty-two.
Five twenty-two, so, you know, we we could be in the vicinity of um a thousand bucks to twelve hundred bucks uh for that line item uh to take care of that added cost. You guys okay with twelve hundred?
As an estimation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, well, I'm okay with it, I mean, assuming that we don't burn any more gallons than that and that's the only question that we're facing. So you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna start heating that building?
Based on on Russ Michaud's recommendation, given the size of the building, we would probably start sometime Sunday and and heat through Sunday, Sunday evening, Monday, so that the building is is been warmed up uh and and heated for Election Day. And the elections are twelve, you know, eight AM to eight PM, eight, yeah, eight AM to eight PM.
So uh do we, did we have a cost, did we face a cost when we were doing the elections at the KC, were they charging us?
No.
There was no cost there at all?
No, each rate.
And and the KC is just not compliant for COVID-nineteen, is that why we're moving?
Yeah, we're just not allowed to have as many people in the building with the whole six-foot social distancing. So we're allowed to, we're able to accommodate more at the multi versus at the KC. And I'm going back like, and that's because of COVID, but like even last presidential election, people were lined out by the road, waiting in line to get in the building.
Yep, I I anticipate we're probably gonna face uh some of the same.
So at the multi, we have more opportunity, I mean, we're still only allowed so many people in the building, but it gives more opportunity for people to wait inside the building versus standing outside too, so. That COVID deal kind of put a crap in.
Okay.
And going back down to ballot booths, remove those, public works, a little more fixing of them, so they're holding up for now. I don't know how much longer, but they're good right now.
We'll stay with what we have?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's it.
Can you go over your totals there?
Uh my total, so my total last year was ten thousand six thirty-two, this year it's at fifteen thousand five sixty-two, but then Gary brought it down to.
Fourteen two sixty-two.
And if you look, if you look at the example of what we had budgeted for our last year, six thousand, uh sixty-six twenty-five for the for the salaries and wages, if you just look over to year to date expense sixty, you'll notice that we only spent twenty-one hundred and that's because, you know, the primaries and the town meetings and and the the local elections and the BBR all took place in the next fiscal year, so that's why we got, we didn't, we didn't spend it there, but we're getting double hit over here.
Yep.
Gary, you had mentioned at one of the prior meetings that we possibly could get a little more from the presidential elections to reimburse us for the extra costs, is that still?
I think that we can, we can put in that cost for um to heat the building. I would need to have like an invoice for that though, because that, that's something that needs to be verified, so. I mean, I can probably talk to Dead River about um about that. I think that we're gonna absorb that somehow with within the but our gallons that that are assigned per per department or per facility, but it's a cost that's borne by by the elections, so. Elections is gonna have to reimburse somewheres, um so and we can, we can try to figure out a way to build that into our reimbursement, yes.
Any questions?
Anybody else? Good, Amy, we're all set. Thank you. Item number eight. Consider Department one-ten town administration budget.
So you'll notice right off the top, there's a reduction in salaries and wages. Uh nobody's, as all other departments, nobody is is getting any increases this year, we're holding in line. Uh we can see a reduction in um the cost of the finance director position, uh some duties were reassigned for HR, the new finance director doesn't assume the HR duties. Uh the HR uh director was, is Heather Picard and she worked with Dana, she, Heather works with payroll and AP, um but she worked closely with Dana on HR, so she is the HR director. So the salaries and wages includes uh my salary, uh three clerks, um the finance director and uh the HR director and Amy Russell uh in the finance department. And Amy Russell, there's a revenue side to this, uh we provide administrative services to a recycling facility. And I think that VRF administration is twenty thousand dollars this year, so that part-time position that Amy Russell has is paid for by VRF. And of course, while she's here, she's she's helping us with other things too. Moving on down, um means they retirement trends with the payroll, that's um, but it did go down from twenty-eight thousand five nineteen last year to twenty-seven nine hundred to this year. Health insurance has gone up, uh excuse me, has gone down, um which I need to, I should verify that number.
You know, Gary, I I was gonna say, all of the um health insurance figures that we've seen from other departments are all kind of going up, but this one is.
I need to go back and check on that number.
On down.
Garrett?
Yep. Yep.
The finance director before me did a family plan, and I have a single plan.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you Gerald.
And and some of the increases, like the police department increase on health insurance was not an increase in the actual insurance, it's because you had two officers that aged out of their parents' plan and got on one or two, something like that, so um that's why some other departments went up, it wasn't necessarily the rate.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Social Security trends with the payroll, um the decrease uh from nineteen nine ninety to eighteen thousand two twenty-eight. Employer Medicare, um from four thousand four forty-one to four thousand two sixty-three. Dental, um as part of my contract, I get dental uh insurance paid, that was negotiated into my contract. Um for the bottom line, for uh employee benefits overall, uh from last year, one fifty-eight to twenty-nine, one hundred fifty-eight thousand twenty-nine dollars to one fifty-five, five forty-one. Um deferred compensation, uh we, we were funding um through here, different, uh I I have deferred compensation as part of my my compensation pa- package. There is also in here, we budgeted uh for uh unfunded liabilities such as employees under the old personnel policy who used to be able to accrue and cash out uh their vacations, their sick time, um and, am I missing something Carol? I think that's it. Uh currently, we, so we used to fund that, um Carol, I didn't bring the GL with me, I forgot, but I think we have about, I had the GL statement with me and I left it on my desk. Somewhere in the vicinity of seven, seventy thousand dollars for those uh reserved for those liabilities. We're covered, we've had some employees retire out, uh we don't have too many people left in the system under the old personnel policy that would cost quite a bit of money to to pay out for their accrued time. Uh the new employees do not have, uh cannot cash out, uh it's earned benefit time, you use it or you lose it. You can only roll over so much from one year to the next, but you can't roll it over beyond two years. Uh and you are allowed to put up to fifty-six hours into a sixth bank, but not more than that. So the employees know that they need to use it or lose it. So, the employees know that they need to use it or lose it. But we do allow them to roll over from their anniversary dates, a, a little bit of, uh, earned time, but they can never aggregate over a certain amount. Basically, after a two-year cycle, you know, they do need to use up, or they're, they're gonna lose it. And that policy change was made, was, was started when I was, it was in play, it was being hashed up before I got here, and, and it was finalized, uh, when I started here three, roughly three years ago. Animal welfare, uh, that is for our, um, we pay for, um, some of the costs for the, um, well, the dog catcher, if you will. Dues members, uh, dues subscriptions and memberships, uh, those are things such as dues that are paid to the, for associations that I belong to. MT-CMA, for instance, ICMA, uh, and other memberships that, uh, some of the departments may have, like, um, Carol with, you know, with, for clerks, and Amy with clerks, and Carol is Finance Director in Tax Collectors Association. Miscellaneous, uh, is, is that is a miscellaneous account, uh, stated at a thousand dollars. Bank fees, we used to budget any bank fees, uh, under, I mean, it's no longer showing in our three-year history, but when I got here a few years, three years ago, they were transitioning out of TD Bank, uh, to Katahdin Trust. And as part of that negotiation with Katahdin Trust, that we don't have those bank fees anymore, and they were pretty hefty with TD Bank. So, we no longer have those bank fees to pay to, budget for, if you will. Postage, four thousand dollars, that pays for all of the postage for, um, our business. It's all, also pays for postage for, um, I mean, pretty much, pretty much everything, uh, in, in the governing body's budget, not your budget, but any mailings that we do, be it my office, Clerks, Finance Office, Code Enforcement Office, well, not the Code Enforcement, but, uh, are paid for out of there. Printing and advertising, um, that's everything from printing our town reports to advertising for, for jobs, um, in the paper. Traveling training was reduced from sixteen thousand one hundred to twelve thousand because of COVID. We know that we're not going to be able to travel as much anymore, uh, for the foreseeable future, so we did reduce that down from, to twelve thousand. So, the overall operating expenses went down from twenty-eight thousand nine hundred to twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Office supplies, um, and you guys can interject at any time here. Office supplies at ninety-five hundred, same as last year. Minor equipment, software and phone. This is, um, if we need service calls for, for our three CX phone system, this Third Eye Global, we budgeted in that ser- that, that amount of money. Rental is for, at twenty-five, twenty-eight hundred dollars is for our office copier lease. That lease will term, um, next year, I believe. So, the overall minor equipment budget has stayed the same from, at forty-three hundred dollars. So, overall, um, last year's, um, government, administration budget went from five sixty, five hundred sixty thousand twenty dollars to four ninety-five, one thirty-eight. Questions?
Zach, no? Somebody else?
No.
We're good? We're good, we're good. So, from what I've seen here this evening, I mean, almost every department is showing us a decrease in expenses, in total expenses, which I think is still a good. Any other comments? Yep?
So, I had, we had talked about, or, I mean, way back when we first started looking at this. I'd like to understand what trainings are required, um, or in the travel and training budgets. It may look like a small amount, because it's six thousand here and five thousand here, but if you add them all up, you know, including the governing body, which I think is, is pretty high, I, I just don't understand it. So, is there a way to get a breakdown of what's been spent
Sure.
on travel versus training, um, across the departments? And then, um...
Part of, part of that number, just, I, I can get a breakdown for you, but just kinda speaking out loud, part of that number pays for the cost of registrations for training through MMA or the different, uh, resources that we have. The clerks, the motor vehicle agents, the occasional trainings. There are programs that I participate in, trainings, that I, that keep me apprised of changes, and it also brings me, I'm working towards a goal for becoming certified town manager, but I do, uh, and that's through the MT-CMA, Main Town and City Managers Association. I do get a three hundred dollar a month, uh, mileage stipend for the use of my vehicle, so that wherever I go, I get three hundred dollars a month, um, regardless of the mileage. So, guys, those are all part of that cost, so, everybody in my staff, not including Keesh's budget, has, belongs to that line right there, is, there's travel and training associated with that.
I'd just like to understand some of the other two, like, when we get to the governing body one, like, why is that so high? Like, I don't know why, I, I just would like examples of, you know, and I'd like to see the difference between, um, what the training costs and the travel, and, but, you know, I need, I need to understand that. Capital Reserve. Yesterday, we talked about what the ambulance has versus what anybody else has, can we have that list?
Oh, as far as what's in the GL?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. I would like to see the GL for that. Um, and then, I know that, you know, for example, just the, uh, voting, just the, um, the Amy's Department rolled over seven thousand dollars into the Undesignated Fund, and Public Works was eighty-some, I think. I'd like to know what the new balance of that fund is right now.
Right now, the auditors are doing, they're working on our audit, and so they're trying to tie that out. It's gonna be a little while still, but, you know, given the impact of that, of the arbitration and the abatement, uh, the fund balance was severely depleted, so, even with the savings that we, we, um, we did with budget curtailments after the, uh, the decision last November, or October, and the further, uh, budget curtailments that were asked of our departments after COVID hit, because we wanted to be with the board, you know, we talked about this, that we wanted to be able to try to, um, mitigate as much as we could to be able to put, roll money back into the surplus, uh, for this economic hardship that we're, we were facing. So, I don't have a number yet, the auditors are working on it, we're right in the middle of it. So, once we, once we can tie that out, we'll let you know.
You know, surely because we're, this is my first go-around, technically, as far as the budget is concerned. I mean, when you say that we're gonna see those figures, do we, do we actually see, um, how the figures went in and how the figures came out to the Capital Reserve, or, or do we just, are we just given totals? Or how does that, how is that reflected? I mean, do we?
You're gonna see, I mean, we can show you the ins and the outs, we can do a detail on the account and show that to you. There's not a lot of fund activity there, usually we ask the board for permission to take from the reserves. So, you will, you know, first, in, your first know, knowledge of it will be a request that we draw money from the reserve to pay for projects, and so, uh, we can show that to you, um, for the reserve accounts, for sure.
And, 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 and the, uh, the accounting process of, of seeing, when we say that these funds are going towards the Capital Reserve, is that actually, do we actually get a chance to see what department, how much is actually going into the, into that account? Do we see that? Like, we were just discussing how, is it, you know, that, we just saw seven thousand dollars, they're basically from one department.
That didn't go into a, that went into the Undesignated Fund.
All right, but, but I mean, I guess, do we see those figures as, as far as how they go in and out?
Well, you'll see them in the audit.
They'll see me in the audit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a lot of activity in, in the, in the town's, uh, fund, because the school passes through us, and it really makes, it really makes the accounts complicated. And so, uh, we really like to tie out those numbers, uh, with the accountant, and we're working on that right now.
So, so Doug, my, my, part of my request to understand what the Capital Reserve funds are right now, and what's sitting in each department's fund, is in my mind, when we're budgeting, right? We're looking at the budgets presented to us, this is, this is what we're, we're asked, you know, what they feel they need to serve the town. I don't wanna be sitting here next June, and we find out there's zero money to buy a new fire truck, like, we've just found out. And we haven't even discussed it, at least in the budget process, to say, okay, where, where? We're not budgeting into that Capital Reserve right now, and we are prepared to take those consequences. I don't want
Right.
to make that mistake. We have to understand what's in those accounts right now, and make conscious decisions to say we're not gonna fund any of that, even if we see a problem coming. That, to me, that's part of, you, I, I have to understand this whole picture to say, you know, this, this budget is fine, or it's not, you know, and that's why I'm asking.
That will be hard to do, I mean, next time we, we meet again, we'll, we'll have that, we'll print out what we have in our, in our fund, Reserve Fund balances, uh, so that you have that as part of the discussion.
Okay.
Easy enough.
No, we have one more, we haven't gone through all of the...
We haven't gone through all of the budgets yet, so we'll, we still have...
Still have what, one more?
We still have Fire, we still have EMA, we still have the library, um...
Social Service, governing bodies.
Social Services, we're gonna, I think we ought to bring back our Social Service, some of our Social Service organizations. I think, you know, a lot of them came from away, like, um, you know, like, Ristic Partnership, not AP, but, uh... Oh, yeah. The Organization for Seniors, they're, uh, Joy Barresi's in charge of that. Anyway, um, it's up to this, this board if you wanna bring everybody back, who's part of the Social Services budget, or just the locals that are here. I have budget, I have information from, um, those agencies that make those requests, that support their requests. And so, I still have that information, it was made available to the prior board member in Finance Committee. We'll bring that back, uh, in the next packet, so you guys can see, for instance, like, the, uh, the Club Francé, or the, uh, the Senior Center, or, you know, so that'll be part of the next, that, that could take some time. So, we have left, um, we have Fire, EMA, Social Services, Library, Pollution Control, that might take a little while. And then take a, uh, draw, or look at the Capital Reserves, uh, and I think that covers it for the first pass.
So, so, um, yeah, go ahead, Laurie.
So, to your question, um, I know Chris and I have gone back and forth a little bit, and, and it used to be that the Finance Committee was separate and, and whatever, and, and we did a push to bring you guys in, with the department heads here, so you could hear from them and talk with them and all that. You've been through this process once already, and there are some changes here and there, but we had kind of discussed that it, he presented last night, basically, not presented, but basically said it would be nice if the Finance Committee could meet together and come up with a list of recommendations or what we think, and there's nothing that stops you guys or us from doing that, and even though this last section's not done, to at least be able to have your voice heard, so that when we do get to the voting with, as a board, that, you know, we have those recommendations in front of us, because once we've been through this whole run-through, then we really like have to sit and say, okay, you know, where are we at, what are we accepting, what are, you know, who has ideas to... So, I don't know if you guys wanna do that, um, I did express to Chris, like, this whole finance thing, you know, I have some pretty strong opinions, and, and, uh, I'm not comfortable voting here and voting there and influencing them, I mean, I, I will sit in, but I'm, I'm, uh, so he needs a quorum, he'll need to have four for that vote. I don't think it's fair that I get two votes. You know, I know it's always been done that way, but I, I just, you know...
That's how the makeup of the Finance Committee was...
I, I get it.
Was created at Town Meeting.
I'm just telling you, when, and when I meet with them, I will probably just, you know, abstain from voting and, and, uh...
Okay. So, I think, a couple of things, uh, we have to leave here tonight and pick a date for our next
Yep.
uh, budget meeting. Number two, uh, I need to know from, from you, from this board, if you wanna have a broader discussion about insurance, insurance benefits, if you wanna take a, a, a look at that, the plans that we have, the employers, the employees' contribution, the, you know, employer's contribution. If, if that's a discussion that you wanna have, then we're gonna need to have a meeting with staff. Uh, we're gonna send out a memo, uh, to them, uh, informing them that, you know, this board should, my opinion, this board should meet with, with the staff, because they're gonna be impacted. And so, that would require a meeting in and of itself, uh, just for that, just to take their, take comments from them and, and have a discussion back and forth. So, to get this budget to the second pass, I think we have one more board meet, uh, one more meeting with, with you guys to finish up the remainder of the budgets, take a look at capital, bring in the GL to show what we have in reserves. And then have, if we wanna have a discussion about insurance, then we have to schedule that as well with, with, with our employees. And then, we're ready for our second pass.
I think it would make sense for our committee to see what's in the reserve.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll email that out to you.
So, what I'm saying is, I don't know, so it would be advantageous to meet any earlier prior to us to deal with the rest of this budget initially, I don't, I don't I think it's gonna speed any process up in that way. And I know it would harm the board's select, we'll do more information, so what our recommendation would, would be, I don't, I don't think we have all the information for the entire budget, it would just require us to possibly be there anyway. I think it's gonna determine when this next meeting occurs, shortly after that, if that information is available, we'll be able to come back and come up with some decisions and present that back to the board.
I, I think that we can meet again next week, uh, earlier the better if possible. And at that point, you know, the board will, will make a decision whether or not they wanna have a meeting to discuss insurances. You guys would be ready, you'd be off to the races
Yeah.
to go over the
Right.
everything, you know, and, and then, that would give them time to meet with the, with staff, and that would give you time to, to do your thing as a Finance Committee. And then, we reconvene for probably what I would envision, a couple of board meetings, budget meetings, um, at the very least. I mean, we, maybe three, I don't know, but at least two, um, joint meetings, if you will. Laurie, do you envision them coming back for joint meetings? Because the way we did it in the past...
It, it doesn't matter to me, as long as they have the information they need. I know, you know, um, I, 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 whatever, I, they need to be included in, in the information that we get. You know, and, but they also need to have time to, um, talk amongst them, like, make their own recommendations and, and...
I guess my question is, when, how do you want them to make their recommendations? Do you want them to make their, work as a committee by themselves and report out their recommendations?
That's up to them, I think, you said you're gonna write something up, but...
But, but the actual vote, when this board says, I vote, I, you know, recommended by this board, recommended by the Finance Committee, will that be a joint meeting? Okay. Okay.
Is that, is that normal?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, so we know the process, sorry, so...
Yep. Right. Okay.
Do you, did, did you guys look at the Social Service budget at all? Have you reviewed it?
I reviewed it real quick.
I mean, could we, could, are, is it, um, are we, not on agenda, I guess, but are, are we able to just go through the list on the Social Service thing and, and see if they wanna meet with those people? Just not the numbers, but the, the list, the Historical Society, I'm sure will want to come.
Oh, yeah, I mean, absolutely, if you want, if you want... Oh yeah, I mean, absolutely, if you want, if you want to grab that social service budget, seven twenty, we can look at it.
So you want to try to what, address that?
No, I think Laurie just wants to figure out who, who we would need to invite if we, she wants to basically poll.
Yeah, because he asked, he asked, do we want them to come back or not, we didn't answer him.
Okay. What, which one, which, uh, which?
Does someone need to really come here and make a presentation for a hundred dollars? I, I don't know. Was that a no, Ken? Is there any buttons that you want to see or? You ready for bed, Ben?
There, there are definitely some that we're gonna, that are going to have to come. I mean, uh, Historical Society's going to come in here, they have a, a request, uh, they weren't there, they haven't been in the social services budget for a very long time and they have some, some projects that need funding and, uh, and they need funding. So, they're, they're making a significant, uh, request, uh, we need to talk about that and we'd like them, certainly we'd love to have them here. Another new request came from that, right at the bottom, the Long Lake Water Quality Association. That's, uh, over, a group over by Lake Shore Road, the Marine Point, uh, Mr. Collins Moisconet and, uh, oh my god, Jerry. They are, they belong to that water quality association and what they do is, um, they do, um, water, uh, dissolved oxygen monitoring of the lake during the summer months. And they have a, it's a program that the state has and they basically fill in the data, they go in and at designated points, at designated times of the day to monitor water quality, they, they check oxygen. They, uh, their meters dead, they need a new oxygen meter, so they made a request to us. I have that information, you guys had gotten that information previous board for that request. They were not around to present their, their requests, because they were in Florida at the time, uh, last winter. Guessing they're probably around right now. I know that they made a request to, um, the Long Lake Ice Fishing Derby for funding. And the Long Lake Ice Fishing Derby committed to, uh, I can't remember if it was five hundred dollars, but it was contingent upon the association being able to pick up funds from other municipalities, they weren't going to fund the whole. In other words, if, if you don't get your full request at all, uh, you're not going to get the five hundred. And so, uh, I'd like to see if they'd be available to, to show up for that. But a lot of the smaller ones, I don't think, I think I have the supporting information there to, for you guys to make your decisions. And you can see just based on past, past years that we've been pretty much flat funding a lot of those, uh, social service budgets. Okay, any, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I don't, other than the ones that you mentioned, um, I don't really see, uh, any figure there that stands out that I need to question. I mean, but, there's, there's a long list. Homeless service of rustic, what, what is, what does that refer?
They're over in the Prescott area, um, they actually had a, their request was for a lot more than that. It was over five thousand, um, they were requesting six thousand fifty-three dollars. You know, we, we've not funded that full request ever. And, and they're, they're trying to fund that, that homeless se, uh, shelter. Uh, and they do occasionally do get people from Atawaska and other municipalities, so they do ask, they do ask the municipalities to help out because those services are available for your community if, if needed. It's almost like a make-ready fee, if you will. I know back when I was a selectman in Frenchville, this was a request that would come in. I think it was back then, it was, my god, Sister Mary O'Donnell, I'm not sure, or it could have been this one. And what we did in Frenchville is we actually funded it, re, to like a reserve account and said, if you, if you get somebody that comes your way from our town, let us know and we'll, we'll give you, we'll, we'll pay you for your costs. And that's kind of how Frenchville handled it back in the day, so, but that's not typical, if you will.
Somebody actually put a, a request in for MBBN, radio, TV, hundred bucks?
Yeah, a lot of those come in by mail.
Yep. Laurie, you see anything there that, uh, you're questioning?
No, I, 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 I only, this is, the Historical Society will want to be here, just to make their case, but, um. I, I don't personally need to see any of the others, I just, I don't want to make that decision. I mean, if you guys have questions for any of these people, then you should be able to ask them.
I mean, they were, they were there to, for the last board to ask those, those questions and, uh, and you guys were there as well, right? So, do you guys need to see them back here? Okay, so.
Okay. That, is that pretty much the same thought?
I guess it's, yeah, it's up to them.
Everybody else on the board?
Yeah, fine with that.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well then, let's, uh, let's try to set up a, uh, a budget meeting for next week. I know that Monday for us is going to be another busy day, I don't know that we want to do Monday. What's, what's Tuesday look like, Tuesday and?
I can't Tuesday, but the rest of the week I'm free.
So Wednesday? Wednesday, I mean, uh, anybody, anybody, uh?
I'm good for Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Five o'clock again?
Yep.
Doesn't matter.
On Wednesday?
Wednesday works for me.
Yep.
Last question would be for you, guys, somebody motions to adjourn. Do you want to have a board meeting with the department, with, uh, staff, department heads and, and employees to discuss benefits?
With, with the open enrollment, can we?
We couldn't do anything before.
Can't join in this budget, we'd have to wait till next budget, right, or?
Well, I mean, we could do it midstream, it would be effective Ja, January one, right, open enrollment, so, but we can't change our policy.
Right.
Until January one, so I think that, uh, that cuts into the, you know, if there's savings, you think there's savings to be had, uh, it, it, whatever those savings are, cut in half. I will say that, uh, you know, and I said it before, a lot of the employees here come here for the benefits. Uh, the rates of pay are better elsewhere, um, we struggle to recruit and sometimes we lose employees because they can go somewhere else for more money. And so, uh, I, I welcome the discussion, absolutely. I think, I think the employees, uh, deserve, uh, a chance to speak to their, to you guys, uh, to talk about that. They, many of them have been here much longer than I, uh, and I think Kevin Dubey was here back in the oh eight and I asked him what, what, they looked at that back then, they had a meeting above the safety complex, they did the same kind of thing we're, we're talking about doing. And I think back then, um, they, they didn't touch the employer's contribution, but they reduced the employer's contribution to the family plan. Okay, so I don't know with the amount though, um, but I could find out. Mano did some, some research on, uh, on the sal, MMA salary survey for local.
I have a hard copy here, please.
So do we want to focus on that after we get through the budget process for this year, or do we want to work on trying to affect that for this year's budget?
Thoughts, opinions, questions, anybody?
Mano, if you would, if it'd be helpful.
Well, there's not much of a difference really. Fort Kent pays a hundred percent of the single plan and seventy-seven percent of the.
Family.
Family. Frenchville pays eighty percent of the single and eighty percent of the family. And Sangakatha pays eighty-five percent of the single and zero percent of employer. And Grandald isn't provided the facts to MMA. But I just wanted to stick around here because I thought, I'm not going to bother with Prescott Caribou, they're bigger than we are. But that's all I had for information, there's not much of a difference, I thought they paid, actually paid less for the employer's part of the single plan.
Do we have any, 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 uh, any thoughts about reviewing that? Does anybody, I'd like to see, show hands if we're going to review that, if we're not, then I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to pass it.
I, I, um, think, I, and I, you know, we've had some, some conversations about this. When you look at it across the board, I mean, it's more than, it's like two mills. When you compare that with the wages that are lower, I mean, we've got some, um, really super mechanics and if you look at them and you look at what mechanics are making in, in that, the industry, I understand public service, you get paid less, but, I mean, their wages are lower, so that kind of balances some of those benefits. I certainly want, I personally would like to look at it, but I feel like I would rather have, you know, maybe, um, Mano and, and, you know, myself or someone else, it doesn't have to be me that, that does the work, but at open enrollment or closer to that time, have the board be a little bit more engaged in, um, you know, the, the plan we're getting and understanding of it so that, uh, when it comes, because we're going to come, we're going to be done this budget and then in three months, we're starting again. So I think the homework needs to be done, um, very thoroughly, like right now, I, I don't know that we have the time and, you know, open enrollment is, uh, what, November fifteen to December fifteen? You, you're just, um, I don't know that we have the time to do it justice and, and to make decisions on the fly, um, I don't think are good for not only the employee, but, you know, the town itself and, and the taxpayer. We just can't come in and start steamrolling everything, so, I, I don't know, Mano, if you want to keep doing research or, or what you feel.
No, I told you, I honestly thought the percentage the employer was paying was more, I was surprised. So, that pays to do the research, uh, without going outside of the area, because I didn't feel it was right going, comparing us to a city where I have no clue what the benefits or whatever they are, so, fine with things that.
So are you, you comfortable right now, just moving forward as is?
Just moving forward and when the new cycle starts and whatever, then we proceed from there.
Yeah, but I mean, you and I are the only two on the board at this moment that, that, that's been through that, that cycle process, at least to have a chance to look at, at, at their.
I think, I think it's worthy of mentioning too, that you've got to look at the big picture too. It's not just about, you, you look at, it's easy to look at the bottom line and say, it's a big number right there. But when you look at benefits as a recruitment and retainment tool, uh, when you couple that with the fact that, uh, the employees, three years ago, agreed to going to an EBT plan and they could no longer bank, you know, sick time and, and vacations that they no, not use to cash out when they get done work. That, that went away, they, those were concessions made three years ago, three and a half years ago. So, you need to be mindful that I think that, you know, the struggle, I can tell you right now, the struggle to recruit, Dan, you mentioned it last night, uh, employees, is tough. You put advertisements out for positions for weeks before you get, uh, a, a good pool of applicants to pick from. We, we now advertise, when we advertise, we don't say application period, and here we say, this position will be, remain vacant until a suitable candidate is found. We resort to looking around, head hunting, um, which I hate when people do that to me, but I know that, you know, there, there's people flying over the public works department, just waiting to pick somebody off. And Laurie, you, you hit it on the nose on the head, that there's a team over there that are worth much more than we pay them, um, for the work that they do. And just, you know, the, the, the inching up of, uh, minimum wage and how that cycles up in the pay scales, has had an effect on our sal, on our overall salaries for all the departments, I failed to mention that, uh, before we started this. Two dollars an hour of minimum wage increase trends everything up, like it or not. I mean, you can't obviously hire somebody at twelve bucks an hour and you've had somebody working for the town for six years, making fourteen, adjust them, and it's just a slap in the face. So, um, I think that when we talk about benefits, we need to be mindful of the concessions that were made, uh, with EBT, with the, the old personnel policy, and we need to be mindful that, um, we're creating, uh, there's a cost to turning over employees. The, the cost is, is not easy to quantify, but when everybody's working overtime because they're having to fill in, those are costs that you really can't easily put a finger on. And so, for me, uh, I wouldn't, uh, putting it out there, like I'm really taking a risk to, it's, I don't want to make it seem like I'm drawing the line in the sand. I just want you to know that it is hard to recruit and retain employees and, and they work hard and they deserve. And, and to the extent that we have employees here, uh, some, sometimes the younger employees don't really care about the benefits, you know, and you can flash that around at them when they're eighteen, nineteen years old or twenty-two and they don't, they don't have retirement on the mind. Or health insurance because they're on their parents' policy, for instance, till they're twenty-six. But, you know, what we see, uh, is that, you know, we start becoming your thirties and your forties, retirement and benefits become a big factor and you wake up and you're like, oh, whoa, you know, I really got to, I really got to focus here on, on the long game. And so that's when those benefits are really important. There's no. So, in the past, uh, we, we consider COLAS, cost of livings, the, but the board sets the COLAS. You know, some towns just pick a number, two percent, Sonnagat used to try, when I was in Sonnagat, they really liked to trend their, their COLAS to the Consumer Price Index, uh, Northeast Edition or the Northeast, because you've got CPI, but you've got Northeast and you've got, it's different for different geographic areas. So, you know, Atawaska's typically gone somewhere in the two percent range for, for cost of living increases when they have. In previous budgets, when we knew we were, we needed to, uh, we were dealing with minimum wage, minimum wage increases and how that affected the, the scale, the employees, uh, we used to build in into the budget, uh, merit increases, an amount for merit. And, and the merits were based upon employee performance, their annual eval, done by their supervisors. And if they were high performers, uh, the, the, the department head would make a recommendation to make an adjustment to their salary. And so those are tools that we had, that we don't, that's not even in the budget. We don't have any merits, we don't have any COLAS budgeted right now. So I don't have, we don't have, these departments are, the budgets are passed like this. And Kevin, you know, has a vacancy that he wants to fill and the, and the guy's like, well, I, I can't, you know, I can't go there for that amount of money. Well, he's, well, like, it's all I can afford to pay you, I don't have any wiggle room, you know, so, uh, it's tight, these budgets are tight.
Okay. So we're, we're unanimous, I guess, in saying that we're just not going to issue this, on this go-around, this, 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 uh, and we're going to just take a look at their, uh, benefits come November and, and we'll discuss it again there and, and, and move on from there? Does that, does that sound like that's what we want to do?
I agree, that can be part of, uh, Mano wants to look at the policy handbook and, um.
Yep. Okay, so we have the meeting, our next meeting's set for Wednesday, uh, at five o'clock. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Dan's going to make it to bed on time.
Need a second?
A second.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.